I would like to, we're going to have some guests do the pledge first, but please welcome Pat Burke. He is the president of the Genesee Valley School Boards Association, and he has done all of the planning for today. So Pat, thank you so much for hosting this and planning, doing all of the behind the scenes.
Okay. Voy hacer una pregunta. ¿Cuántas de ustedes aquí hablan otro idioma? ¿Alguien más? Ah! Dos o tres más. Quiero invitar a mis estudiantes adelante.
I have some special guests today. I had asked if anyone else spoke another language, and so they all raised their hands because they speak English and Spanish. They're rock stars, and they have rock star teachers. So I have Megan Smith and Maritza Matos, who teach elementary ELL. So if you would please stand for the pledge.
I am John James, Senator Alba, of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, the nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as eternal.
Thank you. Thank you, friends.
Good morning, everybody, and thank you for being here. I would like to really give a big thank you to our sponsors, CNS companies, and Sharon Sweeney is here today representing them. Hi Sharon, thank you so much for driving all this way and being part of our program today. I also would like to, we have two of our Genesee Valley School Boards Board members here, Norv Fust and Dr. Dave Woodruff. Are you here? Could you please wave so people see you as well? Thank you. I thank Elba Central School, especially the students who came and did the pledge with us this evening, and the welcoming music outside of the cafeteria, and the wonderful job that the cafeteria staff did. And the whole school is absolutely amazing up here. And they have a tremendously wonderful superintendent, as all of our superintendents are. But I tell you that this is a very special place. And believe it or not, the last time I was here doing a presentation, I actually was dancing on that stage, which is very bizarre. But anyway, I do thank them all for being here, and I thank you all for being here on this very important day. Today is kind of a little bit of flexible. I was telling people that we're like herding cats in a blizzard, which it may be by the time we leave. But we're trying to make sure that everybody gets connected to our elected representatives. And I'm very happy today to welcome Senator Borello, Assemblyman Holly, who is also represented by Barry Flansburgh. Assemblyman Holly will be here shortly. Our newly-elected Assemblywoman Bailey, can you raise? She's over there. She's a remarkable, all these people are remarkable people in helping us. Representing our federal government today is Jake Zane from Congresswoman Tenny's office, and Chris Zeltman from Senator Schumer's office. And what I would like to do is when we do our breakout sessions, and I'll let you know where they are after the award situation, is we have some very important issues coming up on the federal level, so please make sure that you go to the federal breakout room, because you do have a chance to go to two. I thank everybody for being here, and I would like to start off by making sure that you are aware of how wonderful this program is and how it has grown. I also would like to let you know that as of today, because of a recent add of a member, we're now the third-largest educational school board program in New York State. And I'm very, very happy with that because we've added another new member. This year, we added Albion, and we just literally added Medina to our ranks. So we're very pleased about that. I apologize, excuse me, for my voice going in and out. That's something that has been happening recently, and we're trying to get that under control, but we'll do a very good job. I will need, is there a person, Sharon, can you come up, please? I need your help. See, I have to put you to work, too. The awards are way over to the right-hand side, and they're alphabetical. So if you could bring the award over as I'm reading, that'd be wonderful, and the certificates are behind them. Award recipients are receiving, they're wonderful, yep, to the left. Award recipients are receiving also citations and letters of commendation, as well as other things from our elected officials. And we have all of them here, except for there are a couple that were shipped, and those I will forward to you when they come in. Starting off our program today. Alexander Central School developed a social-emotional community outreach program that was well-received by students and caregivers alike. It also increased engagement with community resources. Families engaged in three programs throughout the evening that ranged from sensory jars, breathing, and yoga. They enjoyed pizza and hot chocolate, as well as obtaining information from a wide range of community organizations. A truly remarkable program for the entire Alexander community. We're proud to give the Excellence in Student Service Award to Alexander Central School for their social-emotional outreach program. Assemblywoman Bailey, can you come up front?
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
In the line, and we have photo people everywhere. So you just gotta look nice and stand, there we go. Perfect. Our next award goes to the Attica Central School for the Best Buddies Program. This program focuses on 25 high school students who have dedicated to supporting children with special needs within the elementary and middle schools. Centered on a holiday theme, the older students demonstrate compassion, kindness, and empathy towards these younger peers. This mutual benefit fosters a supportive environment that enhances social interactions and personal growth for all participants. The first two of these projects took place at the Attica Elementary School during Halloween and Christmas. We're very pleased to present to Attica Central School for the Best Buddies Program the Excellence in Student Service Award. Congratulations. Congratulations, sir. Thank you. Avon Central School is being recognized for its Ruler Social-Emotional Program. The Ruler Program is a research-based social-emotional learning approach developed at the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence. It focuses on teaching the skills of emotional intelligence to enhance both personal and academic outcome. Its name is an acronym representing five key emotional skills: recognizing emotions in oneself and others, understanding the causes and consequences of emotion, labeling emotions accurately, expressing emotions appropriately, and regulating emotions effectively to achieve goals. This has led to an extreme positive social relationship and decreased behavioral referrals. The Excellence in Student Service Award is presented to Avon Central School. Congratulations. Congratulations, Ivy. Congratulations, sir. Students in rock band learned how to perform various styles of rock music on any of the four main rock instruments: drums, bass guitar, guitar, and keyboards. The Batavia City Schools' rock band class is performance-focused, and several concerts and performances are held each year where the students demonstrate their ability and growth as musicians. Started in 2014 with one class, it's now in its 11th year. It comprises three classes and one after-school advanced ensemble. Students often possess the show leadership skills in the classroom and in performances. Since many students participate in all four years of their high school experience, classes are a mix of seasoned veterans as well as first-year beginners. I'm very happy to present the Excellence in Student Service Award to Batavia City's High School Rock Band. Mr. Grillo, congratulations, sir. There we go. Congratulations, sir. Congratulations. 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 Showing a true diversity of programs and giving the location of the local landfill, the Byron-Burgen Elementary students have focused on a program to minimize waste by having students sort their lunch garbage into compostable and non-compostable units. Compostable items are picked up by a company called Impact Earth to be composted. This ties into the school's important core value of be responsible, especially within your own community. Throughout daily practice sessions in the cafeteria, students have been taught all about what foods and items are compostable and what the steps are of composting after it is removed from the school district. The Excellence in Student Service Award goes to Byron-Burgen for their central school composting crew. Byron-Burgen? I have to admit, I really love this next presentation, probably because it's from my home school. But anyway. Project Lead the Way, our courses provided for sixth grade through high school students that are related to a STEM experience. The school's math, science, technology, and library media departments all contribute to delivering this advanced program that starts with coding, robot building, and simple machine design, and progresses into higher grades to engineering, architectural, computer science, and data science. At the end of the program, students complete a capstone course which reinforces the skills that they have acquired throughout. Of paramount importance, STEM education prepares the students for the complexities and possibilities of an evolving workforce. I'm extremely happy to present the Excellence in Student Service Awards to Caledonia-Munford Central School for Project Lead the Way. Caledonia? Congratulations. Congratulations, Rebecca. Congratulations, sir. I'm gonna miss you. Dansville students learn business development, skills, and strategies through community-based philanthropic, project-based experiences. These projects, which are held throughout the school year, allow students to learn practical business planning and organizational skills, but also develop a sense of self, altruism, empathy, and service to the local and global community. They celebrate their successes, examine goals, and evaluate incomes. This past year, students traveled to Livingston County Rehabilitation Center to deliver custom-made greeting cards and to interact with residents and spread holiday cheer. The entrepreneurship class is a highlight at Dansville Central School, and we are pleased to give it the Excellence in Student Service Award this year. Dansville? Congratulations. Congratulations, Brian. There you go. Well, you just experienced some of this excellence. The Nutritional Services Program at Elba has positively impacted UPK through 12 students and staff by providing access to healthy, balanced meals that support overall well-being and academic success. By incorporating fresh, nutrient-rich ingredients into the menus, the program ensures students receive the essential nourishment needed to focus and thrive in the classroom. Culturally diverse menus, locally sourced foods, and a wide array of selections broadens the students' understanding and appreciation of different cuisines and different customs. It also has created a welcoming and engaging dining experience for the entire school district. Representing Elba Central School, the Excellence in Student Service Award goes to the Student Nutrition Program. Elba? The Genesee Valley BOCES Culinary Arts Program in Batavia has played a major role in catering the sixth annual Glow With Your Hand event at the Genesee County Fairgrounds. They prepared 1,500 sandwiches, macaroni salad, and condiments, serving more than 1,100 students, chaperones, and volunteers. Guided by Chef Alberto Santos, the students provided a skillfully crafted lunch experience for all those attending and made sure that this group was well-fed. The culinary program in Batavia is well-known for its remarkable excellence, and this marks the third year that this group has taken on the substantial responsibility showcasing their dedication, not only to meal preparation, but also in serving the attendees and being of service to the Genesee Valley BOCES area. The Excellence in Student Service Award goes to Genesee Valley BOCES Batavia Culinary Arts Program. The Big Blue/Little Blue Program is a peer mentoring project that pairs elementary with high school students. It fosters a supportive community where high school students empower elementary students through mentorship, instilling confidence in academic skills, while embodying our gold-blue traits of grit, optimism, bravery, leadership, understanding, and excellence. This program cultivates a culture of growth, inclusivity, and shared learning that bridges generations in the lines with the school's core values. An interview process is held to determine who the school's bigs are, and then they're going to be followed up with a training session. The bigs and littles are paired together to begin the program throughout the year. The Excellence in Student Service Awards goes to Genesee O's Big Blue/Little Blue Program. We are happy to present the Keshua Advanced VIA Individual Determination, or AVID, program, which was implemented at Keshua Middle High School in the 2024-2025 school year. It is a grade six through nine program that is designed to support students in achieving college and career readiness by equipping them with essential skills for success in a rigorous academic setting. Thirty-eight students across middle and high school are enrolled with a focus on those who may be first-generation college students. This process identifies students with high potential to succeed but who may lack the resources of familial experience to navigate post-secondary opportunities. AVID aims to broaden their horizons and open paths to future academic and career skills opportunities. The Excellence in Student Service Award goes to Keshua Central School for AVID elective program. A group of sixth graders give up their time to stay after school two times a week to prepare for a taped broadcast that is delivered each and every Friday to elementary students K through sixth grade. The nightly news broadcasts give students the opportunity to plan, coordinate, produce, and deliver this informative and innovative program. It includes green screen work, script writing, interviews, and school events. Nightly news includes students' birthdays, interviews, a weekly joke, lunch options, sports and band music recognition, among many other things. The students do a tremendous job creating their news source for the K through sixth community at Wilkens Street School. It highlights critical thinking, public speaking, and other skills for all the students involved. The Excellence in Student Service Award goes to Leroy Central School for the nightly news. We are pleased to recognize the Letchworth Central School Christmas for Kids program. Their goal with the Christmas for Kids program is to alleviate the financial stress and burden that impacts so many families in their district. The way they do this is by reaching out to families in their district that may be struggling and asking if they could provide Christmas gifts for the children in the household. Letchworth's central school staff have helped countless number of families over the years. Since 2021, they have provided gifts for 283 children and have filled 834 gift tag requests during the holiday season. This program has touched so many lives and has made Christmas a special event across the Letchworth community. The Excellence in Student Service Award goes to Letchworth Central School for Christmas for Kids. Providing shows twice a year and impacting a wide range of students, the Livonia Central School District Theater Department provides an exemplary program that impacts students by fostering personal growth, teamwork, and community service through theater arts. Whether on stage or behind the scenes, this excellent program fosters all to be involved in the creative process. Studies have shown that involvement in theater arts leads to improved self-confidence and enhances public speaking abilities. These qualities are essential across many career spectrums. As such, Livonia students prepare for their chosen path after they graduate. The Excellence in Student Service Award goes to Livonia Central School for their Theater Department. The Medina Mustangs Make an Impact Day provides a large number of students participating in community-building projects and activities at over 20 locations, including the school district. A volunteer program for the students, this past year over 150 Medina students participated to ensure that projects that are necessary for a vital community are completed and worked on that might otherwise not be accomplished without this type of program. Students learn community mindfulness and experience a connection to things bigger than themselves, and also experience a satisfaction of giving back to their community and to others. The Excellence in Student Service Award goes to Mustangs Make a Difference Day from Medina Central School. Congratulations, Nat. Congratulations. Congratulations, sir. Mount Morris may be considered a small school by some standards, but they are large in offerings for their students. Currently, they have 46 extracurricular programs and 18 sports teams to maximize the impact of their entire student body. These programs are district-wide and are varied in the degree of preparation and impact of the district. Innovative school activities include Odyssey of the Mind, which has had two teams compete in the world finals, are an asset to the continued development of the Mount Morris student. Athletics has also led to dual sports participation in each season, with many students taking advantage of participating in two sports at once. This year, a historic achievement of having a six-sport athlete will happen for the first time. The Excellence in Student Service Award goes to Mount Morris Central School for 46 extracurricular programs and 18 sports teams. Mount Morris isn't here, but Jeremy from Livonia gladly accepts the award on their behalf. I like it when it works out that way. Oakfield, Alabama Central School District's Excellence in Student Service Award is being represented today by their LINK crew. LINK crew is a high school program that helps incoming freshmen transition to high school by pairing the eighth grader with an upperclassman mentor. The program helps the new student get comfortable with high school experience. LINK crew is built upon the belief that students can and will help other students succeed if given the opportunities. Members of the junior and senior classes are trained to be LINK crew leaders with the main goal to transition freshmen successfully by emphasizing three areas: safety, information, and school connection. LINK crew leaders are partnered with eight to 10 freshmen who remain their mentor for the entire school year. I'm happy to present the Excellence in Student Service Award to Oakfield, Alabama School for LINK crew. Collaborating with the Student Support Services Center at Genesee Valley BOCES by a group of Pavilion Central School members led to the creation of the Pavilion Walking and Biking Trail on the district's property. As part of the New York State Healthy Schools and Communities Grant, the Pavilion District was able to map out and create the trail, which is used by students and staff, families, the community, and the athletics department. This past year, Pavilion has been able to host cross-country meets for the first time in many years, as well as host the Gopher 5K race, which had over 150 participants. Bringing an active lifestyle to the community by building and providing the trail on their property, the Pavilion Central School has shown that it is a champion for the Pavilion community. I'm happy to present the Excellence in Student Service Award to Pavilion Central School's walking trail and wellness initiative. Fostering support to parents and children in the district, the Pembroke Primary School Parent Cohort Program provides classes, guest speakers, and workshops to help parents provide a home that is supportive and nurturing for the child. Topics have included starting and finishing the school year strong, behavioral management and healthy meals, and the importance of healthy meals; mental health awareness, building strong readers, and math games for students. This program gives parents the important tools necessary to lead to their empowerment so they can confidently navigate parenting decisions in the home that then support the school district. The Excellence in Student Service Award goes to Pembroke Central School for the Primary Parent Cohort Program. Pembroke? Pembroke? Taking the commitment to a different level is the linchpin of the Perry Central School International Travel Club. Trips to the host countries highlight the history, culture, arts, agriculture, and service in science of those countries. They also give young people the skills, values, and behaviors to participate and prepare them for a more diverse world. Using a coaster from the Genesee Valley Boces, Perry's was the first district in the state to generate aid through the enrichment area, which has driven down the cost of future trips abroad. This allowed a wider array of students from different economic backgrounds to participate in this wonderful program. Recently, scholarships for underserved students were acquired for the 2024 trip to Ireland. This model that began at Perry Central School is now being replicated across New York State and in our Boces. The Excellence in Student Service Award goes to Perry Central School for the International Travel Program. Perry? The Warsaw Central Drama Club is a collaborative effort that brings together a diverse group of individuals. Students in grades six through 12 take center stage showcasing their talents or learning and gaining valuable skills. The program also increases the confidence in the students while providing them with an outlet and opportunity to create. The personal growth of the students involved is immense, and the community and volunteer support is extensive. Presenting two programs a year, the Drama Club thrives under the leadership of Mr. Ian Gayford and Mr. Daniel Wartinger. They both are dedicated and talented and lead by example for all the students and volunteers with the program. I'm happy to present the Excellence in Student Service Award to Warsaw Central School Drama Club. The Superintendent Student Advisory Committee at Wayland Cohocton Central School is a program that allows monthly discussions of concerns and ideas between the high school students on the committee and the office of the superintendent. This program is in its third year, and it is designed to sometimes be directed and led by the superintendent, but other times to be discussions and brainstorming sessions that are of concern to the students. There is no academic or grade qualifications, and all students are welcome. This group calls for increased involvement with student input on communication and communication with the Board of Education and Administration, providing a sense of community and ownership for the student body. The advisory committee has become an integral part of the Wayland Cohocton School District. The Excellence in Student Service Award goes to Wayland Cohocton Central School for the Superintendent Student Advisory Committee. I am under advisement that Wayland Cohocton is not here today, so I accept this on their behalf, and we will forward it to them. Providing a sense of joy and community, the Wyoming Central School District Winter Luncheon benefits the local senior community while using the talents of K through H students at their district. This program, which includes a hearty lunch, provides a strong intergenerational connection and highlights many aspects of the school. The Home and Career Class provides a delicious dessert, while other students have handmade ornaments to be handed out to their special guests. It truly is a wonderful event during the holiday season. The event is filled with food, games, music, and seasonal fun. It is a remarkable example of the school building being at the center of the community, which is extremely important today in our rural communities across Western New York. The Excellence in Student Service Award goes to Wyoming Central School for their Winter Lunch program. The York Central School District Mental Health Team is a group of individuals that collectively have over 64 years of experience in their field. This group of six individuals are student-focused and go above and beyond the standard list of requirements normally seen in this area. They are the first to volunteer in the district, and the main stand making sure that the students and families of the district are consistently handled with care, respect, compassion, and professionalism. The counseling team works hard to provide a safe, supportive, and inclusive environment for all students and highlights the importance of mental health and the need to be involved on more than a crisis counseling mode on a day-to-day basis. Intervention is also utmost important, and this group does it fantastically. Mental health of our students is one of the biggest areas that we have to expand and one of our biggest concerns, and I'm very happy to present to York Central School Counseling and Mental Health Team the Excellence in Student Service Awards. That concludes our awards program for today. Can we have a round of applause for everybody that received the award? And can we have a round of applause for our Vanna White of today, Sharon Sweeney from CNS? You know, she just cut an amazingly wonderful contract, so maybe you can, you know, come up, because now she's worth millions. I mean, she makes $16 million a year for turning letters. It's incredible. We also thank everybody that gave us their nominations for the award process, and we are very, very grateful to be able to provide this on a regular annual basis. This program is designed to highlight our educational opportunities in our schools in Western New York. It's also meant to highlight the programs that schools work on that make a difference on a daily basis with their students. I could not be more prouder in reading the nominations as they came in. I could not even be more prouder than the fact that they were diverse and showed an excellence in areas that many people may not consider for public schools. In the old days, you went to school for what? Reading, writing, arithmetic, and gym. I mean, that's what I remember. But today, it's much more important to have a wider range of things within your community and especially for our students. The needs are changing on a regular basis, whether it is nutrition or drama, extracurricular or mental health services. Regardless of the program, it's important for us all to know that these things must continue in our areas. Today, I'm very, very pleased that we have elected representatives here that have heard the importance of these programs to our students, and that our 25 districts go above and beyond to make sure that our students here in the Genesee Valley are taken care of and made sure that the programs are provided to them on an excellent basis.